And now we will do public comment. I believe Commissioner Wolf is here. Would you like to do that now?
We have not approved the agenda.
Oh, yes, we haven't.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
At least we've switched it around so much with the scouts already. All in favor?
Aye.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, everybody. We had our, I think it looks like you're doing your TNT tonight, or did you do it?
Doing it tonight.
Doing it tonight. Tom's doing the whole thing, so you're welcome to stay.
We had people come on Tuesday to ours, and we had a number of people, and I came and said, "Are you guys here to watch TNT or contest your values of your homes?" And they all wanted to contest their values. So they all went downstairs, and then we started, and then four people came, and I wasn't able to hit them up because the meeting started already. But, you know, they had some questions, but it was mostly just on their assessments and how much they're now gonna pay in taxes. And our administrator said to the one person, said, "Do you think your taxes are bad? Now wait till the school referendum, and everybody just approved it, and so he's gonna get another $2,000." So anyhow, well, it was our house in Pride Lake, and that's, you know, the townies win up. So anyhow, other than that, pretty uneventful. We are gonna settle on about a 3.4 percent tax increase. It should be about 50 to 60 percent. They should go even or go down. Very few people had much more than, I don't know, $50 or something. So there's just very few people who know. That particular guy who complained is within about $300 or something on the county, but he'd been there for 33 years. On the I-35 board, we're gonna try to get Trish to be the vice chair of that.
That was mean.
Well, that's not mean, come on. I've been in that position for three years, and I think that, you know, we should spread it around a little bit if someone else wants it. The chair that's in there now doesn't miss many meetings, so she does a good job, so there's that. And then I have at this point kind of been nominated to be the chair next to this county board, so we kind of go them on a rotation basis there, and it's my turn. So anyhow.
Again? I got to say that.
Well, yeah, I did four years before in a row, but we're going back to the rotation on that, so I think that's just fine. And then Barb Wackman-Brecky will be the vice chair. So, and I think she'll do a good job in that. That position hasn't held, the chairman position, and it's been over 20-some years, so maybe 25. It's been quite a while, so that's why I picked her, basically, because that position hasn't had the chair spot, so, because there's Dave Beer from Pride Lake also, he didn't want to take it yet, you know, so.
You did a good job when you were chair before, so.
Yeah, well, thank you. I didn't mind it, but it's, you know, it's different sitting there with the hammer, and you know, it's, I mean, you know, it's, you gotta be on the whole time, you gotta see all the stuff, and so it's, all the problems in the county come to you before anybody else, because you're the chair, so, but that's, that's fine. We get a lot of extra money for that. But that's all I have tonight, unless you have any questions. I was gonna thank Josh for being on our human resource council for another year, but he's not here, so do that next month, so, all right? Anything for me? Nothing? All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm illegally parked over there because there's...
There's too many people.
A lot of people here.
I'm still on the human resource council, too, but I've got a lot of time left.
Yes, thank you.
Steve, did you hear he's illegally parked?
He just, I saw him call Josh.
Any other public comment this evening? Once, twice, public comment is closed. Consent agenda, any changes to the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, truth and taxation.
You win.
Oh, yeah. Gotta get new glasses, or I'm working too many hours, one of the two. Is anybody interested in the full truth and taxation presentation?
Are you here for truth and taxation hearing?
Kurt.
I might be in the wrong spot, I don't know. I'm just here because I was just wondering about my property value on the home, so I want to know.
Okay, and so that is a completely different process. You're here tonight. When you receive your tax statement, there would have been a number on there to call if you had questions regarding evaluation for this coming year. That process takes place in the first quarter of this upcoming year, and you will need to speak to the Scott County assessor's office related to that, to that value.
You know, if you want, I could talk to him out in the hall.
This is a very expert.
This is all new to me. Thank you, that's a...
I just do the dating times without... Now I'll make the motion to do the short version.
The extra short version.
Just enjoy the picture.
She raised her hand. She hasn't been through it.
I've never been through it, so.
So the full presentation is 30, 40 slides.
Mm-hmm. We're just kidding.
We're teasing with you.
You should have seen Sandy's face.
I made her, sorry.
Where's that popcorn? I'm just teasing. No, I do not need the full.
So...
Thank you.
Sandy, that was priceless.
So with regards to the presentation, we can go through the last couple of slides that actually show the impact. That's really the sum of it, as you know from past quick presentations. There's a lot of information about addressing the citizens, like the one we just had here to give them information. We talked about historical tax impacts, we go through the budget process, but for purposes of this, and I've already conferred with the press with regards to their desire to see the entire presentation, we can just go to the end game and keep it very short.
I've seen this before.
Is it possible to send email those slides?
Absolutely.
I can send you whatever you'd like.
For those of us who have actually never been through it, just to read through the slides, it'd be great.
Yeah, you can.
You can come in, Tom, I'd be glad to do the whole thing for you.
I mean, I can read it on my own, and when I have questions, I'll just text over.
What do you want slide, like, so all this, the first half is just all informational stuff. Basically, for those people who come in and go, "I don't like the, I don't like the property value." I'm gonna go through historical tax rates, these are just informational graphs that kind of compare us to other communities, over the years. These compare us to other cities, where we're at for spending, basically per person is what we look at.
No, you, we usually show these when we're doing our budget and goal session, and you saw variations of them when you had your orientation, so what was in here is a lot of what we saw back in June, possibly updated if there's more current information.
Do you wanna go through any of this stuff?
No.
We just wanna see the impact.
Comparisons, over 10 years, our population's increased 25 percent. CPI upped on 16.4. Those are levy at 18... 11.1, so we've increased our levy, tax impact less than CPI over the last 10 years, here the general fund balance, conclusions. Same as last year. What is the budget?
That's a ton.
Blah, 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 blah. So what is the levy?
I always like the rubber band to stretch completely out.
You like that one? I had to add that because last year...
It was just stretched.
It was just stretched. Now it's stretched completely out.
So the next thing is the SNAP.
No break.
That's what I mean.
Do you wanna go over to these? Tom?
Um, we, again, we talked, this is a lot of the same stuff.
A lot of the same stuff that was on last year.
Yep.
Put the process.
So basically, from here on out, every, most of the projects are almost every, everything that we do is gonna be tax levy, levy?
You got it.
More than likely, there may be, I mean, there's always exceptions depending on circumstances, but yes, new stuff will likely...
I would say yes. Did you answer the question? Yes.
I'm always more optimistic.
Yeah, I know. I know.
It'll be levy unless it's one of the funds.
If you want to touch base on this, this is what we have for goals and parameters this year.
We don't get many grants.
What we set out with at the beginning of the year when we started the processes, these are the five things we basically wanted to do. We accomplished three of the five, so I think that's pretty successful. We didn't really increase flexibility or shift use of LG dollars, but... We didn't get everything else we wanted, which is good in my eyes. $11, the same as it was last year. Here's a breakdown of where the revenues are at.
Expenditures, where they're at.
Here's a levy. You wanna start here? There's only six slides after this.
Yep.
Okay, we can start here?
So this is information, this is essentially the information you will see in your packet on the 21st.
The 21st, yeah.
Related to the levy. You've seen these before, they really haven't changed since the last time we looked at the draft budget. If you look where the most significant changes are, it's in the general operating fund, and those, of course, are related to higher public works position, hire of a new officer. You'll notice that there's also a change with regards to bonded debt.
Which is the ramp up of the 318 fund.
318 fund. So all of the significant changes are related to specific guidance that the council had identified as goals that are generally new or additional things within the budget or ramp up of other things. The one place we do see a drop is in the fire fund, and that is related to debt service fluctuation in that particular fund.
Correct.
Any questions on any of that? Okay. Adopted final levies, so if you look comparatively over the years with regards to where the actual adopted levy is, you'll note that it has been climbing incrementally. There have been periods of plateau, 2011 through 2013. We essentially, we were in kind of the tail end of the recession, we essentially stayed status quo. We had no new employees. Most of the employees we had were kind of approaching the top of the base scale. It wasn't just a lot of fluctuations within the budget, period. As we started getting in there, a lot of those adjustments were related to some of additional officers, some related to additional debt service, but we haven't been seeing a dramatic increase. And as you've seen, or will see from the earlier slides, those increases where we've seen, as they translate into a tax impact for our residents, is less than CPI inflationary index and has been less than relative population growth within the city, which is part of the reason why over the years, even though we've added services and have added costs, when we look at our total expenditures per capita relative to the rest of the state, we tend to score towards, heavily weighted towards the bottom end of that spectrum with regards to what we spend per capita.
Correct. So just information on how we get the estimate of tax impact? This is the little levy graph you guys get in your packet every time that I tell you the average home or the median home, or whatever you wanna call the average median home. The component number's at 4.5 percent, which we set, and we got that slight adjustment up at 4.6, which we mentioned in the work session before, and that's because of tax capacity going down. Because we changed the levy, it's because the tax capacity went down, so.
So the interesting part of this from past years is historically, we used to have very tight banding around the typical home, and we still do. The majority of any particular segment is in that typical home section. However, we are starting now to see a significant portion of the community saw a double-digit appreciation in the assessed value of their homes. It's been a long time since I've seen that in the community when we pulled up this what-if information, so we're starting to see when values go up within the community. Now, as we know, though, you're spreading it over the pie. If my home goes up in value more than the average, I'm gonna start shouldering a bigger portion of the pie. If it appreciates less than the average, I'm gonna see decrease in my taxes, less, a decrease or lesser increase in my taxes relative to the average or people that are above the average. So keep in mind, although we talk a lot about the typical home, and we talked about the median weighted tax impact, which is like 3 percent, and 4.6 for the typical, there will be people both above and below that. There will be people who will see a de, they will see a decrease in their property taxes. There will also be people who will see an increase in their property taxes as well. Not $300, as the commissioner was talking about, but there will be people that will see more than above the $50 average. Any questions on any of that?
Any question then?
No, that's just the city portion, right?
That is.
So with the school bond issue...
You got it.
Everything else, it could go up considerably.
You got it.
For some people, especially with the values.
Right, but we can control that.
We cannot control that.
That's not our, we don't control either of those, just...
No, but it's worth being aware of.
But it is worth being aware, it's all the same money, the same person's pocket.
Yep, exactly. That's where education is important.
I do have to note that over the course of my career, people do seem to be more educated about where the impacts to their property taxes are better than they used two years ago. I think the information is better to people because of technology, are able to get access to that information. Earlier in my career, we'd have this meeting, and at the school pastor, we'd have a lot of people in here, and they were talking about the bottom line on their bill that really we didn't contribute to, and we really don't have that anymore, so that's one thing I have seen over the years, is technology and awareness in the general public of where their property taxes are being impacted.
I think in this area, I think a bigger thing we have is people that don't know where they live. I got more calls last year from township people than I did from city people.
Yeah, I got the same calls earlier when the township was looking at there.
So this is basically the information that Tom had just mentioned, that we thought, we saw 36 percent of homes had more than the typical home, and 27 percent had less than the typical home. So seeing a wider range of people, some people have hires, some people have lower, but the typical home is right in that blue line there. And the weighted average is about 3.8 percent. Typical property tax statement, change in valuation, portion of overall taxes related to the city.
So just for the council's information and pastors, we have people come in and talk about it. Again, because of technology, we have the advantage to actually pull up their property tax online, pull it up and go over it with them at the time. And typically, what we find out is when they see a big jump, there's been a huge change, obviously, in their assessment, you find out, "I finished my basement," or, "This is the first full tax year that my home has been constructed," and those types of items typically, typically are where you have major concerns. Historically, we have not had large crowds at our TNT meetings, unless there were people here for other items on the agenda that just happened to be in the audience, so.
Any questions? That was about the strongest TNT meeting I've ever done, ever, so. Great.
We're all about efficiency.
We're all about efficiency here tonight. We're all about positive vibes.
We're all about the love.
All about the love, yep. Don't break the rubber band. Yep, don't break the rubber band, it is, there's nothing left, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. And thank you, guys, for, really, it's a lot of work, and we're probably pains in the butt to deal with, so.
No, we're not.
He's just thanking you because there's no contingency.
I don't know what he's thanking anymore, it's because there's no contingency.
Just don't forget that car that's...
10 minutes? Get out there quick, see if the commissioner's still parked out.
No, he, he...
He's gone.
He's gone.
He's getting to the next medium, meeting. Another P, PDM.
Mm-hmm.
Any changes in the consent agenda?
No. Mr. Mayor, the council has provided with the revised agenda, which was adopted. There were two additional items, the fire rescue services contract to Cee-Lake Township, and a payment from McCarthy Well Company, given that they didn't vote the original package. We'd be happy to answer any questions before actually on consent agenda, if there are any questions.
Any questions? If not, a motion, or?
Can I just ask a question on the bid issue? And I don't know that I looked overly closely at this in the past, but are we, is there any liability that the company, I'm blanking on their name, but they're gonna...
McCarthy.
McCarthy, thank you. They don't accept, let's just say they don't accept what, what we're paying them?
They would have to pursue, we're at the point where we're saying, "This is what we feel is fair. If you want to do something, you're gonna have to take it to the next level."
Should it be a legal action?
More than likely.
Yeah, they'd bring a claim against the city. They have to give notice that they're bringing a claim. City'd have to respond, and then it'd be up to them to bring something.
Is this a contractor that we have a history of this sort of thing with?
We do not. McCarthy has done some well maintenance work for us in the history, but not historically, but not in recent years, not since we've had our own internal staff in the public works department. They are, there's only a handful of well drillers that are really out there, so they're potential bidder on future well projects, although, to be honest, we don't have any well projects we're contemplating in the immediate future either, so.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. General business, item A.
I'll defer this to Sandy for presentations.
The two nonprofits we have, the Fire Relief Association and the Elko Baseball Club, have to renew their permit to sell pool pads within the city. This usually is a consent item, but it's been put on the business agenda by staff due to a council member being an owner of one of the establishments. Staff is recommending approval of them. Again, like you said, it's, it's an annual house cleaning item, basically.
Or do you need separate motions for each of the general business items?
We could do them both.
Both together?
You could do them both together.
Okay. Make a motion to approve.
Both items?
So moved, and you're seconded.
Well, I thought you were just doing the one.
No, just...
We have motions, we have seconds.
I'll give you only a second.
So we need to call votes.
So you need to call the roll?
Mayor Crawford?
Aye.
Councilmember Timmons?
Aye.
Councilmember Julius?
Aye.
Councilmember Timmerman?
Epstein.
Me too.
Motion passes. Back to reports.
So under reports, administration, public works, police, fire, engineering, community development, and parks, we're all, not parks, parks?
Parks.
We're all handled with the extra time into the work session, so we're down to other committee and board reports.
Scale is tomorrow. MVTA met yesterday, and it was talking about their, yeah, talking about their elections first in January. MVTA did have a strategic planning meeting last week on Wednesday, and they invited me to come to that. It was a workshop all morning long, and so they're doing their strategic planning for the next two years. So that was a very interesting exercise, and they include us in their planning, and they include Elko New Market as part of their future, so.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a favor for you to make contact with the director again?
I did that yesterday at the board meeting in front of the board.
Thank you.
I told him that, I told the rest of the board that he was asked to come, and believe it or not, I think Luther started to get red in the face.
He has not been terribly responsive to my inquiries about meeting, the follow-up to the previous MVTA discussions. The first email went unanswered for a couple of weeks until the mayor contacted him, and then the next email, it's been over a week or more since then, so.
And part of that could be that they're working on his, his annual review and a few other things, too, but, but he, he's well aware, and he is definitely planning on doing it, he just, things have come up, I guess. Okay, I-35 Solutions?
Next week.
Chamber of Commerce?
Let's see, we had our annual meeting on Tuesday. We had Stacy and Joe from Scott County there for their first stop shop, discussing options and availabilities for small businesses. It was quite informative, a good turnout. We had 25 people present. Thank you to those that came, so that was very nice to see there. Ladies' night hour is Friday.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, it is tomorrow, yes. And let's see, we are gearing up for January.
So excited, because I will not be president anymore.
You do have new board members, though.
We do have new board members. We have Danielle Holst is a new board member. We do have one that was written in, Amy Lemke from Holy Cross, but she is still considering if that's what she wants to do. So Danielle Holst is definitely on board, Amy we're just waiting for, to find out.
And has the new president been picked, or is that...
We picked that in January.
It's in January, okay.
Yes.
So you're not necessarily out, you're just...
Oh, I am out. I have arranged it so that I am done.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Too much work. You've been working like a...
Mad woman.
Yeah.
Crazy. I have things that I need to concentrate here, so.
Maybe business?
That and here.
Regional Council of Mayors isn't till next Monday. I suppose we can do CCEC.
I hate to tell you this, but the CCEC is not having a meeting in December, so I'll have not a meeting until January.
Downtown Improvement Committee?
We met earlier this week. Good meeting. It wasn't a ton to really discuss those more or less updates on various community projects, such as the Webster Garden, I'm not sure if that's the official name of it or not, but there's not gonna be a lot more that can be done this year for obvious reasons, but did start some discussions about what we'd like to get accomplished in 18. We're not gonna meet until February, is that right? So, just due to lack of stuff to really discuss, but we did have a bit of a discussion on the lighting throughout the downtown, and how it relates to the, to the upcoming discussions about the roundabout, potential roundabout on 291. And started, and I emphasize, started, talking a little bit about looking at a veterans' memorial in our community. There seemed to be, I'm a proponent of it, but it seemed like everybody else was, and I would have a tough time imagining people would be anti-veterans' memorial, so it's still very early. That's, that would be a big project when undertaken, but it would be something that would be great for our community, so more to come on that.
50 by 30, not many meetings this month. The ones that were to be held are still going to be held, and a few were canceled, so. So we're down to discussion by council.
So it goes back to I-35 Solutions. Typically, we talk about what committees and boards people are gonna be on at the beginning of the year. As you heard Commissioner Wolf say, he's, would like me to be vice chair of the I-35. I can't commit to that if I'm not gonna be on I-35, so is there, how do we?
It's all yours if you want.
Enjoy.
Have fun.
I mean, okay, I just...
Yeah, you have, you have our blessing.
You do a great job.
You'll probably be there unless you decide you don't want to be.
Oh, and that's fine, I just didn't, I didn't wanna step into a role without having had the conversation of, "Am I continuing in that role?" So, all right.
Good catch. Just so everybody knows, we should be getting, I think I've told a couple of you, and you may have heard it, other people, but I took a job at Hy-Vee so I could meet with all their executives for the first three weeks. They were open, from the CEO all the way down to their store planners. They all got copies of our demographic information that Renee provided me. Once the three stores, since we're just outside the 20-mile radius for all three stores, once they get their cost sharing divided up between them, how they're, because of our demographics, they're going to, we should start getting their ads in the mail. We're also being looked at as a spot for one of the new smaller stores from the 8,000 to 12,000 square feet, since our demographics are perfect for what they think they need. So that's the advantage, that's the biggest reason I took the, took the job. I ran into the recruiters at a SCLE meeting and talked to them and found out. It's a very different kind of company, that's all I can say. Very employee-centered, so. And I don't know how long I'm gonna be able to keep working. Been retired for a long time. The other thing is that at Metro City's annual meeting, our city was mentioned by the Chair of the Met Council. She gave a speech, and during her tour here, I told her I thought our number-one need was our interchange. And she agrees, and she stated that publicly at Metro City's meeting. And afterwards, she privately told me during a networking meeting, she had went, met with Mindot, and was urging them to put our interchange on the list for projects. So, we've got somebody finally in the higher-up echelons of metro and state government that is pushing our city and our interchange.